Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock and time for our council meeting to begin. If we'd all please stand, I'm going to lead us in the pledge. All right, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and you can be seated. We don't have an invocation today. If you are here planning to speak on items on or off the agenda, I'd like to remind you to please fill out a speaker card with our city clerk so that we can organize and accommodate all the speakers that we have. Okay? City Clerk's report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on January 4th at 12:50 PM. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Barco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. Okay, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have one. Chief Espinoza.
Good evening. May I have a word with the council? Would you like to give a little?
Yes.
After your interview, I would just take a moment. This is Police Officer Vicki Valitsky. Yes, I'm happy to help. Her today is her actual start date. She comes to us with five years of experience with the Santa Cruz Police Department. Born and raised in Maroonville, attended both the schools of the county of Santa Cruz. While at the Santa Cruz Police Department, she was a superintendent officer, a defensive tactics instructor. She was also a big member of the hostage negotiations team at the current center. There's spare time. She likes to spend time with a whole bit of the tree or the riding. Was there anything else you'd be welcome to give? Thank you. I'll be quick. Just wanted to thank you guys for having me, and I'm really excited to be talking with the community and the state family. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, under ceremonial items, we have none. That brings us to presentations to the council. Item 3.1, this is for anyone wishing to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So again, if that's you, please make sure you have filled out a speaker card with our city clerk sitting right here. Okay, Ty, do you have speakers on this subject?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I actually currently have 12 speaker cards.
Okay, so the time limit will be two minutes per speaker. If you could keep your comments to that, you'll come up here to this front podium that's right in front of me. And we'll start with calling Don Perino, followed by Ron Kirkish, and followed by Tom Miller. If you hear your name, could you please come up to the front row? Yes, Don, you have two minutes.
It's two minutes, right?
Two minutes because of the number of speakers, yes.
City Council, please Chief Espinoza, and I put a thousand years with you. I have a cat, two year old cat. It's 16, but 42 years, so we're on good terrain on the second, actually on the third. Two pelts in your body of velvet or top. The overall winner now, receiver, December 5th, 2009. He's been a house cat for like 20 years, 22 cities. He also had a neighbor, had a cat with raccoon, bought from a PPO cat for a high dollar per hour, and a billion other holes. He tried to find out, and then they put nails on some common kittens for his walks. And we have a black cat that he's been with for 13 and a half years. She was torn and fended, but with the wood chips. The last three years ago, everyone remember how we went out to the northwest, so it's that's pretty much everywhere. That's what he was about, teaching. My next topic is the Hill, you know, air force, and my close, this, went off of there. Isn't the lead nor play fuel anymore? Doesn't harm anybody. We know their port of India, they say, down the green and south now. And I hope you do the council a little more than it's that, will you? The next thing, not just going to stop, the big fight line from San Diego, going to Los Angeles. This is again, Los Angeles, see, and our water, they rate three inches an hour. Now, here, Los Angeles, the flood from the Los Angeles River, they have a dam on it. We have dams, appear the water goes to south. It's not right up here. But that thing is out of any doubt, and it's sad, so it is better retirement for people that look to the city center.
Don, I'm sorry. I know, time is up. Thank you, though. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, I don't think the mic's on, just, Ty.
You want to make sure the mic's on? He might not have been speaking.
Yeah.
The mic was on.
Okay.
Let me go check to verify.
Do you want to be with your own loud and clear?
Hang on, it's not on.
Okay. Testing?
There we go. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley, council, city manager, city attorney, and community. Once again, you know, on December 4th, 2023, I stood before you and reported that Zack Hilton's seat was empty, vacant, and he was now absent for the 19th time over the past three years. Tonight, January 8th, 2024, only 36 years, six days later, Councilman Hilton's seat is once again vacant for the 20th time, and this is the first meeting for 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Miller, and then Ruth Garcia, and Teo Castillo.
Hello, everybody. Good to see everybody here. I want to talk about parklets, but I also want to talk about the reason, and a little bit about my history, and it does relate to parklets when you hear my history. I grew up here, I went to elementary school here, I graduated from Gilroy High School, I went to Gavlin College for a year and a half, and I've always loved Gilroy. And I would come downtown and see that the, I deal with a lot of downtowns in a lot of cities, and I come downtown and I see the city wasn't thriving. So what I did, I saw this building that I used to go to Boy Scouts, and then it became Ford Department Store, and my mom used to buy me clothes there, and I thought, oh, maybe this, I could help thrive downtown. So I went to a bunch of different tenants, I personally interviewed a bunch of people throughout California, I got a tenant. All well and good, did a lot of improvements to the building. So then I thought, well, what else can I do to help make it thrive? There wasn't any other restaurants on the block. And so then I, so I thought, I was talking to another city manager up in Seattle, and he was all saying, hey, we have this parklet thing, it's really thriving. So I said, oh, that's a good idea. And he's telling me that it just brings people together. When you see four people in a parklet, and it just, and when you're driving by, it makes you, it just enthuses as people to interact with each other. If you're driving by and you see, in particular, my parklet, there's, it was two parking stalls. If you drive by and saw two parking stalls, you would just keep driving. So the idea that, you know, and then the whole idea about where this parklet came from, it was totally permitted, it costs a lot of money to put all the permits together, do the structural engineer, it is a Fort Knox parklet. I mean, and rightfully so, the city was encouraging, you know, since it's going to be the first one. So I helped out, I just want to emphasize the fact that...
You're out of town, I mean, you're out of time, not town, time.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry that it's a two-minute limit, there's that many people speaking. Okay. Ruth Garcia, Teo Castillo, and Evelyn Hudson, if you could all please come to the front, and Ruth should be at the microphone.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ruth Garcia, and I'm a local business owner. I own the local Windermere office located right next to the Chamber of Gilroy. And the reason why I'm here today is because I feel like the parklets should be addressed in the same topic. I think one's not different than the other, and I think the fact that we're calling one oranges and one apples speaks to part of the problem that we have going on in Gilroy. I think they both need to be addressed fairly, and I think the city needs to understand part of the reason why Ms. Castillo has not handled this issue in a timely manner with you guys, and so because she isn't great in English, I'm going to assist her today, we're just asking that you put it back on the agenda and that you look at them both fairly. We're asking that whatever rules apply to one, apply to the other. We don't have an issue with tempos, love Dan Nelson, love their parklet, but we think both of them should be judged fairly and on the same terms.
Okay? Evelyn Hudson? No, 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 guys, we can't, we can't have clapping because it can intimidate someone who speaks a different opinion, please. This is supposed to be a fair space for all, so there is not to be that kind of behavior, please. Okay? So next is, who's speaking next? Teo? Teo, okay.
Hola, buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Teo Castillo y soy dueña de Station 55. Primero que nada, me disculpo por no haber asistido a ninguno de los...
Madam Mayor, can we stop for a second?
I'm sorry. Okay, we have word lead?
Yes, let me get that translated. I was not aware that she was...
We have a translator, we just need to know that in advance.
Oh, okay.
Give me one second here.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I actually spoke with her in English today, and that was just fine, so it's okay.
I try my best.
Okay, I didn't have any trouble understanding you. That's whatever you need to do. Yeah, in the future, translation is something you're supposed to request in advance so that we can be prepared, that's all. Ty, would you like me to move to someone else and then come back?
Oh, no, I'm almost ready.
Okay.
Did I finish my two minutes?
You did.
Okay. Do you want Evelyn next while you set her up so we know?
No, we're ready now.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Mi nombre es Teo Castillo y soy dueña de Station 55. Vengo a presentarme a ustedes porque no había podido hacerlo antes y me disculpo por ello. Estaba hospitalizada con mi bebé, con un problema muy fuerte, pero ya estoy aquí. Solamente quiero agradecerles que nos reciban y pedirles que nos vuelvan a considerar sobre el parque. El parque es algo muy importante para nuestro negocio, no nada más por lo que ya invertimos en ello, sino por lo que va a venir. Es, el parque es muy importante para poder salvar mi negocio, eso es algo por lo que hemos estado luchando por todo este tiempo. Son cinco años, cinco años de negocio, en los cuales no nos hemos podido recuperar en medio de una pandemia y una recesión. Hemos tratado de hacerlo lo mejor posible siguiendo todos los estándares que nos han pedido para poder trabajar en ese parque. Incluso todavía estamos dispuestos a regular lo que se necesite hacer para poder continuar. Simplemente queremos saber si la ciudad está interesada en ayudarnos y continuar, y así nosotros trabajar con los otros negocios también. No estoy interesada en quitar ningún negocio del camino, quiero que todos seamos exitosos y que downtown se convierta en un lugar bonito para que la gente pueda venir y tenga diferentes opciones que hacer. Un restaurante mexicano, un restaurante americano, de todo tipo de comida que se pudiera ver estuviera perfecto, pero para eso necesitamos quedarnos también nosotros. Igual que los demás también necesitan estar ahí, nosotros también lo necesitamos. I'm sorry, solamente les quiero en verdad dar las gracias por recibirnos y atendernos a todos, somos muchos hoy. Espero y reconsideren todo lo que han dicho. Gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Evelyn Hudson, Sammy Trujillo, Albert Moran, that's the next three, if you could all please be up front.
So I'm here also in favor of the parklet. I was a little bit concerned when I was watching the December 11th meeting. I wasn't sure why we were addressing a traffic issue with certain businesses around the area. I question how many accidents have actually been a result of the parklet being placed there, because wouldn't it be fair to say that they have to, she would have to follow code, and it would have to be something that would, that would be approved prior to her putting up the parklet, correct? So that was something that should have been taken into consideration originally. You know, the parklet is in place, and asking her to tear it down while you guys decide whether or not you guys want to implement a parking or a parklet program is unfair because she already put out that money, and you're asking her to do it a second time. And she did it during one of the worst times in our recent history. And honestly, as a citizen of Gilroy, and I too was born and raised here, I raised my kids here, during the pandemic, that was a place that I needed to be. I needed that socialization because there was a lot of loss, and personally, I incurred a lot of loss during that time period. And so having a parklet like that in place is important. COVID, although the state of emergency has been lifted, it's not gone, it's still here. We're still dealing with this, and our businesses are still dealing with the ramifications of COVID and the pandemic and what it's actually done to our economy. So therefore, I do believe that it is unfair to allow one and not the other, and I do know that there are, you know, considerations that have to be, you know, put in place first, but I do think that we should consider all businesses and the cost to all businesses. So just as tempos owner...
I'm sorry, time is up. Thank you, though. All right, Sammy Trujillo, followed by Albert Moran.
Thank you, council members. My name is Sammy Trujillo, organizer for District Council 16. I did 16 years organizing there, and I've represented the painters, tapers, floor covered and glazing, still a current member. I have been a customer for Temple and Station 55. I was, last time I was here was in August, I was a representative for Station 55, and Station 55 that I had gotten a six to one vote in favor of parklets. So I'm a little disappointed on this December's meeting vote count, and I need to make it clear that I, at that time, there was going to be a parklet program put together and thought that maybe you guys needed a little bit more time. Well, the recommendation from the Planning Department recommended until middle of 2024. So I was hoping that you guys would adopt that. That's a key element to put out a good parklet program for all. Businesses thrive on that, like the gentleman before said. We need to be a council that's going to promote businesses and not hurt businesses, and that's a key element that I'm asking every one of you council members to do, along with everybody that's watching this video that goes out, that they're paying attention, that it's up to you guys to serve us as our community needs a better downtown and more diverse area, and that's what we need. We need people to be able to take their dogs, enjoy the outdoor dining, and have that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Albert Moran, followed by, is it Tark?
Good evening, council. I'm Albert Moran.
Yes.
I just want to speak on behalf of Station 55 and as a customer and patron of Station 55. I want to say that Alfresco Dining and the experience has brought us, community and family together when the family, or when the weather permits. Not only is it the very few places that we can take our family dog and be outdoors and enjoy an Alfresco Dining experience, because there's not that many. And, you know, we, we want more, we want to see Gilroy thrive, we want to spend and keep our tax dollars here. We want to enjoy, you know, what Gilroy has to offer. They do have an outdoor dining around the perimeter of the building, but I do not want to eat next to the garbage bins with flies, you know, pestering and bothering me while I'm dining. You know, I want to have a nice environment to enjoy, and I think Station 55 and their parklet brings that to the community, and I think you've heard that from everyone else behind me, that we need to have more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tark, Tark M. Fox? T-A-R-K-E is what I have. Okay. Okay, and then Mike, again, if you could please come to the front row so that... So followed by Mike Monte, and then Robert Cepeda.
Hello. We've lived here about 43 years and tried to hit all the establishments to keep everybody in business and all that sort of thing. And when I first heard you wanted to tear the place down, I couldn't understand your thought process. And the first thing I thought of was due to all the injuries I've had and the amount of medication I've had to take, sometimes so many pills, take a step, rattle. I thought it was like a punishment to people with injuries, the elderly folks, and especially the handicap people. Unlike the other establishment with the patio built out close to the street, Station 55 isn't ground level, so you either have to climb steps, or if you're in a wheelchair and it isn't powered, get somebody to roll you up the ramp. That doesn't seem practical to me. So I just couldn't understand your thought process, and I thought I might say a little something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Monte?
Hi, my name is Mike Monte, and I'm a retired San Jose firefighter for 29 years, and I thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of Station 55 Parklet, and I want to say that I've gone to many homes where people are sick, they have many, many issues, and I have treated many of them, and a parklet allows us to make a choice whether we want to go into a place that's crowded, okay, where the air is being recycled, or it's open outside, okay? And I choose to be outside because I don't want to get contaminated, okay? And in Santa Clara County, okay, on the latest January 5th, 2024, okay, update, there have been almost 3,000 people that have died from COVID-19. In the last 90 days, 149 have contracted the disease. So if you think that this epidemic is over, okay, you are wrong, and people need to know that this epidemic exists and parklets are absolutely necessary for people to be able to make a choice whether they want to be contaminated by other people who aren't wearing masks, okay, who are sick, okay, and are exposing other people, okay? You have a choice. Do you want to keep people from contracting this disease and spreading it, or helping them to keep themselves and their families healthy and safe? Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cepeda, followed by Andrea Hightower.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community. I come here today to discuss a different topic that everyone else is talking, except for the first gentleman that was regarding water. And I'm sure you are aware that recently the state has approved for sewer water to be in tap water, and this is the same case for Santa Clara County, which does involve us, unfortunately. They treat us as, you know, just the rug on the mat compared to Silicon Valley. But this is more, a much bigger issue in the way that it has to do with climate change. You know, climate, here's the, according to the Gilroy opinion piece, January 3rd, "Climate Change Is A Global Crisis Demanding Local Leadership." Now, I believe in climate change. I believe it changes four times a year, winter, spring, summer, and fall. And the whole nonsense about the fossil fuels and all this nonsense, all this other stuff. First, electric cars are made with fossil fuels. Solar panels are made with fossil fuels, and wind turbines are made with fossil fuels. So I don't know how that's going to, it's all very, it's all hypocrisy, especially all these world leaders, you know, John Kerry and Al Gore that scream to the high heavens and yet they're flying around everywhere in their big jumbo jets, have more, bigger carbon footprint than any of us combined. So for us to drink tap water, all I'm going to say is, you're going to see cases of ecolites skyrocket, because, I mean, oh, and I do recommend everyone to get water filters, because you're going to need it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andrea Hightower, followed by Anna Mendez, and then Anna Mendoza.
Andrea Hightower, I'm here to speak on behalf in favor of the Station 55 Parklet. Our small businesses here in Gilroy deserve our support, and to have a, have a small business build up a parklet, break it down just to rebuild it again, and cost tens of thousands of dollars when it costs the city nothing to extend the policy, is actually outside of the vision of Gilroy, the 2030 vision. I'm also the mother of a disabled child. Our options of where we can take her are very limited, and these parklets give us more options. So by forcing them to take their parklet down, you're taking away an opportunity for her to sit outside and feel like she's part of the community, which is also opposite of the 2030 Plan Principle 10, to have more ADA compliance, more ADA accessibility. So I encourage you to re-agendize the policy for the parklets and extend it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh. Did, did somebody go off the list?
Yes, because it was a...
Okay, so Anna Mendoza's next, and then is that the last?
That's the last one.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone here, council members. As Gilroy community members, business owners, and patrons have come here and speak to you guys about how important it is for us to have Station 55 parklets be left out. You know, I have this all written down, but I always like to talk from the heart. So everybody here is supporting Station 55. And one of the things is, we have said, please treat people the same way, equally. Don't discriminate. So a lot of people say that I use the word discriminating a lot. Discriminating means not to treat somebody equally. How can, our board members made a decision when the owner of Station 55 had her baby open-heart surgery, couldn't attend the meetings, couldn't advocate for her place. So we asked for you guys to please touch your heart, think about, what if this was your business? What will you do? What if your life, your business, with the support of your family? What if that business was helping you pay for your child's medical bills? What will you do? Will you make the same decisions? How sad it is that Morgan Hill has more open spaces for their community. They support their community members, the people that live here. Remember November, it's coming up, and you guys are going to be looking for elections to vote for you guys. What are you doing for us? What are you doing for our community? Think before you vote. Read, investigate before you do. We put you there. Our taxes pay your bills. So please allow our tax money to come back to us, represent us the right way.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so closing, item 3.1, and that brings us to item four, which is reports of council members. Councilmember Barco? Councilmember Armendaris?
No reports.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
All right, Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Klein?
No reports.
Councilmember Tovar?
No report.
Oh, my gosh, you guys. Well, we had a meeting, SCRA, SCRA Board, and the Santa Clara Valley Joint Water Resources Committee, and it was mostly about recycled water and trying to get more, all of the water that comes into SCRA during the summertime is fully recycled, but of course, in the wintertime, there's not so much a demand. So trying to work with valley water to figure out how we can harness... So trying to work with valley water to figure out how we can harness some of that and make it recycled water, or increase our recycled water output in the summer from water that comes in in the winter. Gilroy Sister Cities, next week, we're going to be visited by the mayor... Well, not the mayor, but the representatives from the sister cities of Takamachi. So just wanted to share that. Those are the only meetings that I had since our last meeting. Okay, under council correspondence, we have none. Future council-initiated items? Looking to see any? Yes?
Yes. So given the public outcry, given what's happening, and the voice of our community asking us for this, I'd like to ask that we re-agendize the issue of the parklets, in particular, the parklet at Station Fifty-Five.
Okay, that is something that the council can vote on. I would like to point out that at our last meeting, when we directed staff to come back with information on talking to businesses, that that is, in fact, going to come back at our very next meeting. So it will be on the agenda already.
But meanwhile, though, the Station Fifty-Five has received a notice to demolish their parklet, so...
No, they are receiving a notice that gives them thirty days, so they have until mid-February, so they will know first.
They will be receiving that notice?
Jimmy, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So they have... They will end up having until February. They will have until after the January twenty-second meeting. So this will be on the January twenty-second meeting, and there will not be anything to demolish before then.
Okay. All right. That's on the record then, now?
Go ahead. You want to speak to that?
I'm going to make sure it's on the record.
Yes, the initial letter they received was a ten-day notice that they did not comply. If they do not comply within that ten days that the letter was sent, they will receive a thirty-eight notice that the city will tear it down at the end of thirty days. So they should get that receipt as soon as the ten days expires.
So the notice was dated January twelfth, and so from January twelfth on, they will have an additional thirty days.
Yes.
And meanwhile, we will be... It will be agendized for January twenty-second.
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you. Clarification.
Okay, great. Okay, so that brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any items on consent that anybody wants to remove? Okay, opening public comment.
I have five speaker cards here, Madam Mayor.
For... Okay.
And it's for seven point four, so if you just wanted to click on that one, I can...
Okay. I wonder if... Okay, let me click on seven point four.
The first speaker is going to be Brianna Debold, followed by Cassandra Huerta, followed by Elizabeth Hoiberg.
Okay, so the item has... So nothing has been pulled from consent. If those who want to speak still want to speak, that's fine, but nothing has been pulled. So if you would like to let... How should we do this? Should they let you know if...
We can have...
Or I'll just call your name and don't come up. Come up if you still want to speak. Brianna Debold, Cassandra Huerta, Elizabeth Hoiberg, Tiffany Brooks, Anna Sifuentes. Okay, so I'll assume we can just take a motion then for the consent count, right? Does somebody still want to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh. Apologies.
You can still speak on items that are not pulled.
You are welcome to still... If you are here and you would like to say something before the council, this is the time to do it. I just didn't know if some people were here wanting to speak if something was pulled from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So do.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barco, seconded by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Yes. Passed unanimously. Okay. Item eight, bids and proposals, none. Item nine, public hearings, none. Item ten, annual appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees with seats vacant or expired as of December thirty-one, 2023. Okay. There's no... I'm sorry, is there... Oh, go ahead, help her out. Okay. Is there any kind of report that goes on with this, or do I just start?
No staff report on this, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, council members, we have applicants for certain seats on commissions, some of whom interviewed, some of whom did not.
Oh, but Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I request that we do take public comment on this?
Oh, should we do that first?
Yes.
Okay. Opening public comment. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
I received no speaker cards on this, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so I'm going to go down, I'm just going to call us all alphabetically, and ask for your vote, knowing that you do not have to vote for anyone. This is something that each council member should be taking into their own consideration and doing the best that they can with candidates that they feel are assets or would be assets to the commissions. And hopefully, everyone feels free and comfortable to voice their own opinion without fear of being criticized for what they think. Okay? So I'm going to start with Arts and Culture Commission, where we have one seat expiring December thirty-one of two thousand twenty-five, of 2025, and another seat expiring December thirty-one of 2024. We had two applicants, so I hope you have in front of you who those... Who those applicants are. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Armandares, do you have a choice for the seat expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five?
Amy.
Okay, and this is... You can only choose one here. It is for the seat expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Councilmember Barco.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to make any selections for... I'm just going to do the Planning Commission and the Youth Commission.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's good to appoint people when they're the only one that applied.
Okay.
I think we ought to go back.
Okay, I may still ask you again as we go, just... Okay, so you're... Nothing on this one. Okay, Councilmember Klein.
Amy Hufford.
Okay. Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks.
Amy Hufford.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Amy.
Okay, and I'll go with Amy, so she has enough votes to get that seat. I guess I need to ask about the twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Councilmember Armandares?
Yeah, Miriam.
Okay, Councilmember Barco is none. Councilmember Klein?
None.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
None.
Councilmember Tovar?
None.
And I am none, too, so that one does not get appointed. Okay. Ty, stop me if I go too fast or... Okay. Library Commission, we have two applicants, one seat expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-seven, and another one expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-six. Yes. Okay, so for the seat expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-seven, Councilmember Armandares?
Carla.
Councilmember Barco?
None.
Councilmember Klein?
None.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
None.
Councilmember Tovar?
Carla.
Okay, and I'm none, so that one does not make it. Okay, and for the seat expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-six, Councilmember Armandares?
I would go with Miriam.
Councilmember Barco?
No choice.
Councilmember Klein?
No choice.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
None.
Councilmember Tovar?
None.
And I'm none, so that one also does not. All right, Parks and Recreation Commission, we have two applicants for three seats that expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. So with the two applicants, I will ask to vote for two, or up to two. Councilmember Armandares?
Let's see, Mr. Bozo?
Mm-hmm.
And Teresa Graham.
Okay. Bozo.
Bozo.
He'll say Bozo.
No, I always get it.
Okay. Councilmember Barco?
No choice.
No choice for Parks and Rec?
No, that's what he said.
Okay, that's what he said, yeah. Councilmember Klein?
Salvatore Bozo and Teresa Graham.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Salvatore Bozo and Teresa Graham.
Councilmember Tovar?
Bozo and Graham.
Okay, and I am Bozo and Graham, so each of them is appointed to the seats expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. And therefore, there is no need to vote for... We don't have any applicants for the twelve thirty-one twenty-five seat, right?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so that's now Planning Commission. Okay, now this one, we have two seats expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-seven, so I'm going to ask you to vote for two when I call your name.
Up to two.
Up to two, sure, if you only want one, yes, up to two. Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Stephanie Alley and Monica Valdez.
Okay, Councilmember Barco?
Stephanie and Terrence.
All right, Councilmember Klein?
Terrence and Monica.
Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Stephanie and Terrence.
Councilmember Tovar?
Stephanie and Monica.
Okay, so Stephanie already has four votes, so I'll do Stephanie and Monica. And that makes... Yeah, I was going to vote for Monica anyway, and so I'm just going on, yeah. Hang on, how would that have...
So only Stephanie gets appointed, since we have a three-three tie for...
No.
We have four.
We have four for Monica.
Okay.
And five for Stephanie.
Got it, okay.
And let me just make sure I got it right. So for Terrence, it was Barco, Klein, and Marks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, right, so Stephanie got... Yeah, you got that tie?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have four votes for incumbent Commissioner Kelly, and I also have four votes for Monica Valdez.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
So those are the two. And now for Open Government, there was one applicant for a seat that expires this year. Councilmember Armandares?
Ann Marie.
Councilmember Barco?
None.
Councilmember Klein?
Ann Marie.
Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
No choice.
Councilmember Tovar?
Ann Marie.
And I am no choice, so that's three-three, so that fails, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Youth Commission. All right, this one is choose up to three, seat terms expiring nine thirty twenty-five. Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Oh, my gosh, I didn't bring my notes. Let's do... Oh, I feel terrible, I didn't bring my notes with me.
You don't have to vote for anyone, then.
No, but...
I do.
No. Yeah, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay. Councilmember Barco?
Gianna.
Okay.
Garcia.
Uh-huh.
Byra.
Sorry?
Zara.
Byra?
Who's this?
Number four.
Oh, yes, okay. I got Gianna, I got Byra, okay.
And Emily.
Emily. Okay, Councilmember Klein?
Emily, Baru, and Zara.
And Zara. Okay, Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
All right, Emily, Gianna, and Zara.
Gianna and Zara. Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Emily, Gianna, and Baru.
Okay, and I'm Emily, Baru, and Gianna. So, yeah, the three people that got at least four votes are Emily, Baru, and Gianna, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so those are the three appointees to the Youth Commission. That concludes, correct?
That is... That concludes it.
Okay, thank you to everybody who applied, whether you're here, whether you're at home. Very, very, very much appreciated. All right, that brings us to the next agenda item, which is eleven point one, City of Gilroy Donation and Fundraising Policy. Bryce Atkins will give us this report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So if you could provide a little bit of background information, the city has commissions to fundraise, donation policies needed. This primarily benefits Arts and Culture Commission, Parks Recreation Commission. Arts and Culture Commission has the fundraising... Is there one on the screen? My Arts and Culture Commission has a provision in its charter where they are fundraising as part of their authorized duties. Parks Recreation Commission has had interest in it. Can we answer the questions?
Yes. Thank you.
And then the other commission... Well, do you want me to start again? Were you able to hear as I spoke before?
Start over.
Sure. So assisting the city in its commissions to fundraise, donation policies required. This primarily benefits Arts and Culture Commission, who has in the charter to actually have the function of fundraising for an arts and culture program for the city, and the Parks Recreation Commission as well has expressed interest. It also could potentially benefit other commissions in the city overall. So in your agenda packet, and tonight we're discussing the draft policy, it's crafted from a review of other cities and their policies, and then modified as needed for Gilroy. It's been reviewed by the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office, and the draft version that you're being presented tonight has also been reviewed by the Arts and Culture Commission and the Parks Recreation Commission, both issuing recommendations to the council to adopt the policy. So the provisions of the policy identifies requirements for accepting donations. Some of these include donations being consistent with city goals and objectives, and must not conflict with law, does not provide any restrictions except those pre-approved by the city, appropriate recognition and acceptance based on the value of the donation, and compliance with the Records Act. It also outlines the procedures for accepting donations, and details information required to document the donation, issuance of a receipt, and appropriate reporting based on the value of the donation. The policy also discusses the need and requirements for fundraising programs, which must be approved and include both the goal and sponsorship, donation, fundraising activities, identify the target audience and the method of outreach they're going to use, and procedure for acceptance and reporting of activities, and working to ensure internal controls. It contains information about sponsorship agreements and naming rights, lists costs, accounting, and record-keeping requirements for city staff to follow, and then discusses special considerations for real property and public works... Works of art, sorry, public works of art. Also includes miscellaneous provisions and disclaimers, including that the city assumes no requirement for upkeep of materials donated, not guaranteeing the tax deductibility of a particular donation, and that city employees with enforcement or regulatory authority, such as police officers, firefighters, inspectors, and code force officers, may not solicit donations in uniform. Alternatives, council may provide direction to modify the draft policy. There's no fiscal impact for this particular agenda item. Fundraising will generate, as anticipated, generate revenues, with any potential costs for the fundraising effort to be absorbed within existing budget appropriations. So staff's recommendations are council review and provide direction regarding the draft donation policy, and the next steps based on that direction, staff then bring back the changed policy for the next council meeting for adoption. I can place a presentation, happy to address any questions or comments.
Thank you, Bryce. Okay, I'll start with questions from council before going to public comment. If I should see you on the screen. I don't.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't see anybody on the screen. You want to speak? Okay, question?
Bryce, thank you for this. Obviously, when it's come back, when you bring it back, but if this were to move forward, any donations that we receive, when will council be notified of those donations? You know, is it something that's going to be quarterly? I mean...
That's... If council was to put in a provision about reporting in a frequency, we could do that. We could do it either seasonal basis, like quarterly or annual, or as donations are received. It's whatever council's preferences for policy.
I've got a suggestion for that, too, in my questions, but if... Go ahead and finish your questions, because then I've got several in the whole thing, that's just one of them.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Barco?
Bryce, can you give me an example, like, what kind of donations are we talking about?
It could be anything, small donations to, say, a park, you know, somebody wanting to donate for a park improvement or a dog park amenity. Could be donations for a program, like recreational programs, I could see receiving some of those. You could have donations of public art that they may want to install in the area. The Arts and Culture Commission is going to actually be coming forward, they're already[1741.91] already identifying things they wanna do fundraising for to create public art out in the, out in the community, they're also looking at cultural community, a cultural community event that they wanna have fundraising for, so it could be any, really any governmental purpose.
So like a mural, or?
Could be mural.
Something like that?
Yeah, it could be a piece of equipment, it's.
Okay, do we have any members of the public wanting to speak on this?
I received no speaker cards on this matter.
Okay, so closing public comment, and, yeah, I had a lot of the same questions you guys had, it was like, where does, and you can't watch, these are, the commission meetings to where this was presented, you can't watch, because they're not videotaped, so we couldn't do some of this on our own, but the, the city charter, like our staff report says, tasks the Art and Culture Commission with fundraising, and so we didn't really have a policy in place that the city could actually follow, so I'm gonna go through some of the things that I would like to see if this council wants to support in, in coming back, that to me make it more clear, and then circle back to the very beginning of the policy, the first one, for those of you who have the policy in front of you, item one I, where it says, all donations will receive recognition appropriate to the level and nature of the donation as determined by the city, I think that should have reference to what, what are the amounts that we're talking about, and then that's gonna get to what you're saying, so if you look at item two B, it tells you, it differentiates between donations under five thousand, and then C is donations of five thousand or more. Under five thousand just goes through city administrator and finance department, all that stuff, five thousand or more comes to city council, so I think that, that there should be a tie-in to that section, to I, to two B and C in item I, it should reference that what we're talking about, all donations that receive recognition appropriate to, based on, or as indicated, or however the city wants to write it, is that majority supported? Put that in?
Sounds fine.
Okay, then on. Councilmember, it was on item four, which is the page one twenty-one of our packet, under costs, accounting, and record-keeping. I think we should add an item, that currently says, departments shall report any donations or sponsorships accepted, received, by the department through reports to the city administrator's office and the finance department, I think there, we should also have something that says, that addresses when it should be reported to the city council, my suggestion would be, if it's five thousand or more, it gets reported to city council each time, not seasonal, not any, not monthly, just when there is something of five thousand or more that comes to us. Okay? Okay, so I would change.
If it's like a piece of art that is self-valued, that amount I think is still be appropriate, right, somebody adds, attaches a value to it themselves. You know, because art is so, like, subjective.
Is that okay? Okay, yeah, I, I don't know anything about how you value art, so, okay, okay. Okay, so those two things, I, I think there's majority support to change, and then, I, I'm wondering if. Hang on, I thought there was one other thing, I just wanna make sure I didn't forget it. Under sponsorship agreements, we're gonna tie that to, to the same dollar amounts, correct? We said that, yeah. Right, again, under five thousand, city administrator, over, comes to us. And then, oh, that, okay, under works of art, that was it, I knew I had something else. Under works of art, that paragraph should say, fourth sentence down, where it says, which shall include the review and recommendation of the city's Arts and Culture Commission, we should insert to the city council, the recommendation to the city council, not their recommendation to the city administrator, for example, okay, yeah, so that, that always comes through, so we don't have, you know, issues of things that didn't get public opportunity at both levels, right, at both levels, okay, so that's gonna be put that in there, and then under item seven, I personally think that it should say, in addition to city staff, it says, city staff shall maintain the highest standard of ethics, that it should say, I mean, we have no authority over it, but city staff, elected officials, and appointees shall maintain the highest standard of ethics in fundraising activities, because sometimes it could be a council member that might be trying to fundraise, even though you may not, maybe you're not supposed to be, you know, like, city employees aren't supposed to be doing it in uniform, maybe we're not supposed to be doing it with a council member hat on, but sometimes that distinction gets confusing, and people neglect, so I would insert that in there, too. Okay, those are all good, then, the last thing I would ask the council to consider is at the very beginning, where it says, the purpose of this policy, which kinda gets to Councilmember Bracco's question in the beginning, like, why are we doing this, where is it coming from, well, because this is something that the Arts and Culture Commission is really needing, that's how this started, and also Parks and Rec might use it, too, that we, that last line shouldn't be so broad, it should say, this policy is meant to formalize the process of receiving donations and how to fundraise, as may be commenced by the city, or the Arts and Culture Commission, or the Parks and Rec Commission, instead of applying to absolutely every possible appointee, would that be okay? That's what we're supposed, yes, that's what I'm saying, okay, yes, 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 do I have a fourth?
I do have something to add, though.
Okay.
And I know it hasn't, we haven't finished this process yet, but the.
Yeah, this is gonna come back.
Okay, do we know when it's gonna come back?
No. But we're not approving anything tonight, is the point, we're just giving directions.
So the item is anticipated to come back to the next council meeting with a changes read.
Okay, just because we're in the process of creating our DEI policies, and so I'd like for, we should have language included that it has, that donations of things like art and stuff like that need to comply with our DEI policy, even though it's not, we don't have it yet, but, will we have to go backwards once we have one, to include it, to include that language, or is it a given?
I would hope it's a given, but I think you're talking about public art, the city has a separate public art policy, and so we could include it in that when we review that policy. Yeah, I couldn't really say if, if it needs to be here, or it doesn't.
Yeah, because if they're like monetary donations, it doesn't, obviously it doesn't apply, right, but.
Because we would not accept, we actually cannot accept a donation or anything from a group that does practice discrimination or prejudice, so that's already in our, in our process.
So, Rebecca, this would come under item two, right, works of art, that's what you're talking about?
Right.
And it says, if a contribution is proposed related to a work of public art, covered by the, a contribution, that's not, well, a contribution could be a work of art itself, right, covered by the city's public art policy, so it has to be covered, is it covered, or is it not covered?
It is not specifically referenced as the DEI, you know, program, in that, because we don't have one yet.
Because we don't have it yet.
But that's where it will be referenced, is in the public art policy.
Yes.
So then it should be, it should fall under that, and we'll be okay.
I think so.
All right.
Okay, any other comments? All right, then, we're good? All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to eleven point two, City Council Downtown Committee, Part One, Subcommittee Reports and Recommendations, Plywood Removal and Vacancy Ordinances, staff report is the Gilroy Downtown Committee, which I guess is Councilmember Marks, okay?
Councilmember Marks, the, the mic should be working right now. You just need to turn it on.
All right. The Downtown Standing Committee was formed May first, twenty twenty-three, is made up of fifteen members consisting of five council members, building owners, and business owners. Its purpose is to deal with issues in our downtown area between First and Ten Streets, which would make our downtown a more attractive place, where businesses were to come, want to come, and people wanna shop and dine. Five subcommittees were formed, Plywood Removal, Vacancy Ordinance, Beautification of Downtown, Noise Ordinance, and Code Enforcement, two subcommittees are presenting tonight. One of the topics that the committee wanted to address was plywood removal, it is understandable when a building is under construction, and the front of the building has to be removed, that plywood would be used to protect the inside of the building. Unfortunately for some building owners, plywood has become a permanent front for some of our downtown buildings. Before writing this proposed ordinance, this subcommittee contacted the following cities to see how they handled this problem. We contacted Redwood City, Livermore, Salina, San Jose, Sacramento, Santa Cruz, Morgan Hill, Paso Robles, Fresno, and Gilroy. Most of the cities we spoke with said they did not have a problem with plywood-fronted stores, because it was not allowed in their city. We discovered that Gilroy does have an ordinance that addresses vacant buildings storefronts, but it is not being enforced currently. In writing the proposed ordinance, we incorporated much of Gilroy's existing ordinance into the new proposed one. I'll turn this over to Jeannie, who will tell you about the proposal.
Thank you, Carol. There we go. So the actual ordinance is five D seven, window displays and plywood storefronts that are not occupied, or not occupied for ninety days. We did review the current policy that Gilroy had in place for this, and we also identified and looked at potential improvements that we can add to it. One of the things that Carol mentioned earlier was the point of code enforcement, and that was something that we did add to the existing policy that we would like it to be added to, that we need code enforcement to, of course, enforce this ordinance, and what was in there was also the officer would be sending out certified letters to the responsible owners or people for that storefront. The existing, we didn't change a whole lot, but in the existing ordinance, A through C, and just to give you a brief overview and for the residents of Gilroy, that the faux windows and dressing containing goods and services with a visual characteristic would be something vibrant, they can use, you know, background panels, other methods of screens in that space, whatever is viewing towards the street, so that can be viewed, so it's not just paper and other things up, that there would be, B would be some type of works of art, that would be cultural, historical, educational, and value, some type of background panels, that also is facing with that. We did, we talked about this wanting some examples that people can see, so our community department would provide those examples, Dave will talk a little more on some of that, of what we are recommending, we also had different examples from other cities, and what they currently use in those spaces. Section D is one area that we did add, that no drywall, sheeting, plastic, butcher paper, plain paper, or other rock coverings are strictly prohibited. All window openings, doors, facades, and awnings, et cetera, must be finished in appearance or in compliance with one of the above, in going through, so at least it looks presentable for downtown, especially, I know, in the future, moving forward with the sharks coming, and we start having more and more people coming to our downtown to be presentable, and maybe people will wanna spend or purchase one of our buildings in looking at that, so I'm gonna transition to Dave now, and he will give a little more examples that we talked about, thank you.
So one of the items is for the plywood utilizations, what we're, we're requesting is, if the building facade needs to be removed, plywood may be utilized within ninety days of installation. Plywood must be decorated following above criteria, as what Jeannie said. If not temporary, if not, the building owner will be fined five hundred dollars per month, which will be placed on their property tax bill, until, or until they fix their issue. The temporary front needs to be removed after one year of being up, no additional permits will be approved until the active permit is complete. The temporary front is removed, and, and all fines will be, and all fines are paid. Once that, that happens, we'll go ahead and, after, after that, the building owner is subject, after the one year, the building owner is subject to the fines of two hundred fifty dollars per month, which will appear also on their property tax bill. If there are circumstances why the temporary front has not met this deadline, the building owner will be asked, asked the Community Development Department to grant another year extension. Decorative artwork and mural proposals designed should be respectful, appropriate for all ages in the community, there's a couple examples, is it on here? These are a couple examples that we found in some other towns, that they put on the front of their windows to display a vacant building, and just kinda something that, this is another building downtown that we had put some artwork on the front, this was really geared towards marketing the building, had a website on and so forth, and that seemed to work out good, the building is now, has been leased, and it, it just, it was something other than the plywood or the paper, and it was something that I just thought would be a good, a good start to do something downtown. Also at the bowling alley, I don't think it's on there, we had the bowling alley, the same thing, we had, we put the plywood, the plywood up, and we started working on the front, and I, we did some artwork on the front of it, just to make it look a little bit nicer downtown, and the whole purpose is basically to, if someone comes to our town, to be able to see something that is more vibrant, it just looks better, and, you know, we all know.
Was it much more expensive?
It's not cheap, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a cost that I felt was worth it, I worked on the Garlic City building, and I was able to lease the building, the bowling alley, you know, obviously you got a lot of great reviews, and just something to kind of stimulate what's going on downtown, and give a little more energy to everyone down there, and it's, and the plywood removal is just basically, and to clean it up, just so when people come through town, they understand that we are trying, you know, if you see signs like this, at least we're trying, if it's just plywood, and for these signs, it's, it's very discouraging, you know, someone coming into town, so we're just trying to better our downtown, this is why this group was put together, and we're hoping that we're going in the right direction, and, and it seems like it, the downtown's getting better, and this is what we're thriving to do, and it's a little bit of help, and most storefronts are not that big, so the cost is not that bad, and we could always work with people and, and to make, to try to make it a little bit easier on their budget, because, and it, it just, the bottom line is it benefits everyone, even building owners that have the empty buildings, and the facades look nicer, or their values go up, and it just, it makes it, makes it a better environment for everyone downtown.
I think, like, your comment, Rebecca, with Gilroy City Bowl, that, you know, that was a larger building that Dave had, some are not as large, but there's areas where, just like, you know, we've had with the Downtown Business Association, where local artists, and even students spring in, and having them be able to paint, so there's a lot of different ways that can go about, where it doesn't have to be a huge, a huge cost for that, and we wanna know that we share that we are willing to work with the owners, not just like to carry, you know, this isn't to be a stick, this is to be a joint effort, and just to work with us, and what are your challenges in moving forward, so we want you open and moving as fast as we can as well, so we just wanna share that most of the ordinance is the same, it's just really adding the code enforcement team, and as well as some examples of actual decorative art and paint with that, thank you.
And I was gonna reiterate, we have art students in town that would be very willing, from the high schools, Gablin College, to put up artwork in any of the buildings, plus we have muralists that have volunteered their time for free, paint included, to just paint something on the front, so for someone who does have a problem with cost, there are avenues, we just want everything looking very nice. Currently, we have two buildings in our downtown that have plywood up, they're right now not complying with anything that we have in our ordinance, or even in the city's existing ordinance, one building has had plywood up for five years, and the other one has had it up for three years with no movement. What, we do not consider, as Jeannie said, this ordinance to be a stick to any of our businesses, all we are asking is while the building is under construction, to please have artwork in the windows, and if plywood is up, please decorate it. As we mentioned earlier, the building owner has up to one year to remove the decorated plywood, but we encourage plywood to be removed as soon as possible. We not, we want our downtown to be as aesthetically pleasing as it can, we are asking for the council to discuss what has been proposed, and hopefully move it through the proper channels for the adoption of an updated window display and plywood ordinance. Thank you.
Do you want us to talk about this one?
Yes.
Before the vacancy, okay.
Yes.
Do you want, are you gonna come back?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, yes, so I'm gonna go, I'll go down the line, because I, I'm not seeing any speakers on here, so Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Marks, how, how does it affect, if it's boarded up, and there's no construction going on, versus if it's boarded up and there's construction going on?
Those are the buildings that we are trying hard to target, to get something moving. If they have plywood up, like I said, we have two buildings.
We have two buildings currently in our downtown area that fit that category, the building owner has to comply with the new ordinance if this gets passed, where he or she needs to decorate that plywood, and if the building is just empty, we have quite a few empty buildings downtown, they need to get artwork up and make it very attractive, so it's gonna take some work, code enforcement's gonna have to really, go ahead, Jeannie, you wanna talk?
That's where we talked about having code enforcement behind this, where before there really wasn't, so first it starts with a letter, and then the follow-up and so forth. My parents have a building downtown that, God, they had purchased in the sixties, and they had to apply to this ordinance. had to apply to this ordinance at one point when they had a vacancy. And of course, they didn't have to tear down their front, but they had to do decorative in their window front part of it in coming through. And this is some of the things, we want the business owners to come with us to share with their challenges, you know, what is your situation with your permit? I think what Carol was after is we just don't want, if someone purchases a building, please don't rip down the storefront and you haven't planned budget-wise or with, you know, and then they, and then their permit expires and now we got plywood up forever. So it's trying to get them to, you know, work with the city of Gilroy a little more as in really what their plan, so maybe when they submit for their permits, really what is their project ahead of time moving forward? And I know Dave can speak to, you know, Gilroy Bowl, where he did have to tear down his storefront, and Dave, how long did you have your plywood up approximately? For about five months? That he had. So that's kind of our goal and how we can work together in the hopes with this to kind of move it along, and, you know, if they need longer than the time that we're asking, then they need to share with us what those needs are. Councilmember Barmanderis, you have a question?
Thank you. When does the clock start? Because I, I mean, like, like our committee members said, like, if a building owner could show that they're trying, like, they put some effort into it, it's not going to cost a lot for them to do something other than plywood. There's free muralists, free artists, or students, there's a lot of room for creativity and like, and ingenuity there, right, for somebody, if, if somebody can demonstrate that they're trying. So I'm just wondering where the clock starts, and if, also, you say that there's two buildings with plywood, does that include First through Fourth Street and Seventh through 10th, or just like the center of downtown?
It's Monroe Street. It's first, the two buildings that we're talking about are between First and, not First, Fourth and Seventh.
Okay. And have you assessed the others though, from Seventh to 10th?
Uh, no, we did not, we did not go down there and look, but they would also be included because they're part of our downtown, First and 10th.
Yeah, because I think you'd find a few more.
Mm-hmm. I think so. When you said about the date, what I would envision, the council giving direction tonight, and then if the direction is for staff to write it up as an ordinance, then it comes back to council, and then we vote on it, and then I believe it takes 30 days to actually become official, is that right, Jimmy? And then at the 30-day mark, code enforcement, if it passes, code enforcement would write the letter to these building owners, and code enforcement would have to go downtown and, and pick out all the buildings that would fall into this category, and then they would have 90 days to get artwork, to comply. And then if they have a, a situation, they can come to community development, talk to them about it, get an extension, but if it's just up for the sake of being up as we have right now, no, that's not okay. So, and if they don't comply, then we put the fines in, because it is easy, it's easy to decorate your plywood with all the muralists that have volunteered, and it's easy to get the artwork for free, so you don't have to paint, I mean, so you don't have to buy anything. So.
And those fines get added to the property tax bill?
Yes, similar to what we do with the water bill, correct, Jimmy?
So it's a lien?
It's a lien.
It's a lien, so it doesn't mean that we, the plywood would necessarily come down, but the cost would rack up as a lien. Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to the committee. I, I'm in favor of this, but Carol, a question, because as you know, one of the issues or concerns that we have is enforcement, right? And looking at the fines, and again, I see 5,000, 502.50, but, you know, in considering the impact, the financial impact it would have for staff or enforcement to go out there, those, those fees, the number of the fees that you have listed here, is that going to help, you know, pay for that if we need to, to pay for enforcement to go out there? Do you follow what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that we have.
I am following what you're saying. What, you know, I think ultimately, sometimes we don't get things done because we're afraid of the time, you know, to be put in, so then nothing gets done, and we waste our time. I think, and maybe I'm a dreamer on this, but if, but if other building owners see that we're serious about it, I don't see this becoming a huge problem. I see where other building owners say, boy, Gilroy is really serious. And I say that because other cities, I even had some laugh at me when I talked with them, and they said, what do you mean you have plywood up in your downtown? And I said, well, we do, and I said, you don't? No, we don't allow it, it's just told, so as soon as someone comes to get the permits, I envision community development saying to them, we have restrictions here in this town. And this is what happens when you don't comply, because we don't expect to see just papered windows or nothing in the windows or plywood up for five years. And I don't see this, if it's real, if we're really tough on this right off the bat, I don't see this becoming a problem because it's a way of life in Gilroy. And our downtown could be an example to all the other, you know, First Street, 10th Street.
Right, and thank you for that, and that's the question why I'm asking that, because again, that's, I think, what you and I and others want, right? We have to, again, we're not trying to penalize these individuals, but we're making sure, we need to make sure that they're going to follow whatever policies we have in place. And if that means the fines are higher, so we can have code enforcement out there, then maybe we need to readjust the limits.
When I was in Palo Alto, they have a lot of empty downtown buildings, but you would never know it as you're walking, because the buildings are all maintained, and you see artwork, you see things in the window that make it look like it's actually inhabited. Watsonville was doing that for a while too, and it's, it just makes it very welcoming to building, to businesses that want to come and do business here, it's like, wow, this, this city cares. And that's what it's all about, is making us aesthetically pleasing.
Fred, I'm glad you asked that, because as a business owner, you know, that was a concern about carrying a stick, you know, making this a B, but I think it's trying to get, we have some existing, but also moving forward that we're making a stand, I mean, a lot of the other cities we talked to, particularly Santa Cruz, they move very quickly because they have problems with squatters getting in, so they're, they're, they're on it as fast as they can, they were saying, within their 90 days. I think this is something that I'm glad you brought up, was when they come down for permits, like Carol was saying, we need to make them aware of it, that, and maybe we should ask them what their plan is, we need to see what their plan, before you rip your storefront off, please have a plan budget-wise, financially, and where you're at. We understand with COVID that there's things with windows and other things coming in, you know, we'll work with you on that, but three in five years, that's a little beyond, so maybe we need to put something in when they come in for permits, that this ordinance, and there's some comments made, so they're made aware of it sooner.
And I think it's getting people's attention, because Saturday night, I had a phone call from the five-year man, the man that I mentioned in, in the report, and he said, I hired a contractor, my plywood's coming down this week. And I said, thank you, so I'm thinking, boy, you know, without us even talking about it tonight, it's already hit the pavement that we're very serious, and I was going to praise him about it tonight, I'll do it at the next meeting if it comes down, so.
Okay, Councilmember Klein, did you have something?
I was just questioning, I know we talked about revisiting the downtown specific plan, going on an agenda item, and wondering from First Street to 10th Street, and, you know, like what you said, me, between Seventh and 10th Street, there's places that need, need to address that, so maybe we can adjust that too, if we look at the specific plan at some point down the future, how that fits too, right?
Absolutely. I like it, I haven't commented yet, but I, I like it and I hope we can all get it to work, so I, I have nothing more to add than yay, thank you.
So then, Jimmy and Armin, then where is the next step? It goes to staff, or tell us the next steps, please.
Yes, Councilmember Marks, the, the next step is it would be incorporating the community development work plan, and we would, again, need to work with council to make sure that if that goes into the work plan, does anything get deprioritized, but we would first need to look at this and see how much it's going, time it's going to take. One thing that the committee did that helped staff is that we don't need to come back to council and really get that input, we don't need to have a community meeting because we have the committee meetings, so we skipped a quite a few steps, but until we really get legal review and such, we would, we would need to see what this entails, but I, I don't think this is an overly complicated ordinance, considering that it really, one, it applies only to two buildings at the current time, and two, this has already been written out there, so I could come back to you at some point and give you an estimated date, but I don't want to, I don't want to do that quite yet.
All right, thank you.
Well, wait, one question though, it applies, you said it applies to two buildings, but those two buildings are just between Fourth and Seventh.
Just using those as an example.
It applies to First and 10th, exactly, so there may be, it may be more than two, but that's okay, as long as you got an answer to your question, that it goes into the work plan, and then from there, we have to massage it into where. Okay, I think the next one is going to involve more city attorney time if that goes forward, so. You want to take on that one now? Right?
Yes, Emily's here, she's going to do the report, and then we'll both be here to answer questions. It's just me and her, because Victoria went to work for the city, so she was on our committee also.
Hi. All right, so I'm going to go over kind of a summary on why we thought this subcommittee was important, this topic. I'm going to go through kind of some definitions and our take on what we think should be implemented to solve the problem in downtown, and then we have some exemptions that we've come up with that would be helpful for building owners who are doing renovations, tenants who are doing tenant improvements, things like that, and then we'll also cover the cities that we, the cities that we researched to see what they implemented for their vacancy ordinance as well. So the high number of vacant buildings in downtown Gilroy can cause a major blight to our downtown area, because it causes real estate, real estate prices to drop and will further suppress the economy of downtown. Furthermore, a vacant building that is boarded up or not maintained can turn people away from enjoying downtown or investing in it. The buildings encourage vandalism, breaking and entering, and misuse. Due to the longevity of vacancies and the fact that many are owned by the same parties, a vacancy ordinance is long overdue to correct the growing problem in downtown. Our definition of a vacant building is one where at least 35% or more of the building is unoccupied or not open for business or open to the public. Vacant buildings will be required to register with the city of Gilroy within 10 days of becoming vacant, so if a business closes and moves out, that's when the clock starts, essentially. One, once the building is registered, the city will review the condition of the building and assess if the building needs to be brought up to code, because that's a common problem in downtown where tenants leave, building owners don't bring the buildings up to code, and that's what causes the building to be vacant for a long time. It also then has issues passing along code issue, code problems to the future tenants of the building. There will be a fine of $150 per week that will be assessed for buildings that are not registered after the 10th day of vacancy. The registration will include an annual monitoring fee of $1,500. So because this vacancy ordinance is proposing that the city does an inspection, we want this, this ordinance to pay essentially for itself, and so that's why the fines are assessed and to encourage building owners not to leave a vacant. Contact information for the building owner, including name, address, address and phone number, and the day the building became vacant will be collected, and this information will be posted in the window along with any codes that need to be brought up to date. The posted information will be known as the building's report card. Vacant buildings that remain vacant for longer than 60 days will incur a vacancy tax in addition to the monitoring fee. The tax and the fee will be an assessment on the building's property tax and will be the responsibility of the owner, whether or not the owner is responsible for the building not being open to the public. The vacancy tax will be an additional $6,000 per year, starting on the 10th day of vacancy or the date the building is registered, whichever is earliest. But we have, the clock starts, and then they have 60 days, and then, so after the 10th day, if they've registered, then the clock starts on the 60 days. Once the 60 days is up, that's when the annual fee starts. So there's a variety of exemptions that would be, that would exempt a building owner from this. One of them would be that the building is up to code and they're actively leasing it, so they, the, their tenant moves out, they immediately, as Dave said, you know, put up the flyer, it's released, there's no building code issues, that's going to prevent someone from moving in, they don't have to incur this, this vacancy ordinance and the annual fee, because they are actively trying to get tenants inside. There's an active construction permit on the building with consistent and active construction on the premises, so that means that they, that doesn't mean you can demo the entire interior and then have it sit without doing anything for six months. Even if your permit is active, you have to actively be doing construction, which is obviously not, you know, cut and dry, but this allows a 180-day exemption from the date of registration or 10 days after vacancy, whichever comes first. If the construction is not complete within 180 days, the building may, owner may apply for a 90-day extension. If the owner, another exemption would be if the owner is active-duty military and deployed, if the owner has died or inherited the, the building, they qualify or their executors of the estate qualify for 180-day exemption and can apply for an extension if needed. So one of our in-use definitions that might need to be further developed by staff or comments that we receive here, any ground floor commercial space will not be considered in use unless either leased out to a bona fide tenant intending to use a space for illegal activity or actually occupied by an owner or some other party for some, for some substantially similar purpose and in an active business. So you can't just put a desk in there and not be open to the public, it has to be something that is substantially used at least 35% of the ground floor. So when we did our research for this vacancy ordinance, we referenced the city of Sacramento, the city of Oakland, the city of Palm Springs, and the city of San Francisco. A lot of our information came from Oakland and Sacramento that also had a lot of these issues, and then Palm Springs and Fairfield had the report card, which actually helped a lot, because it allowed people to know why and who was responsible for the, for the buildings, and if they wanted to rent the building or if they were interested in the building, a number of different things, instead of it being this mysterious empty building. So I'm going to turn it over to Dion for questions.
Yes, we took, each one of us took a handful of cities and contacted them and to learn how they deal with it, and we got a lot of the same answers from cities as Carol did. What? We don't have this problem, we don't, just don't allow it. So, and, and I, I'm, I called Oakland, and I talked to their city manager, their city attorney, and their community development director, and it's working for them. It pays for itself, and, and one thing I want to point out, we're not talking about just downtown, this is citywide, you know, nobody wants a vacant ice or next door to them, and there are some properties in Gilroy that have been vacant for years, old rundown houses that are just sitting there empty. And so this is something that'll, that'll be citywide, and we're, we're taking the approach of, it would have to go to ballot measure, I believe, our attorney will have to get more into that, but we would put the fines on their taxes, we'd turn them into the county tax collector, they put them on there, and so this way, it, it has teeth, you know, no bank's going to loan you any money on a property that you owe back taxes on. So we believe that, that's going to help in a lot of ways, and everything on here is just what we came up with, it can all be changed by the council or thrown out or however, so we're here for any questions.
Okay, since I didn't ask for public comment on part one, I'm going to ask now, is there, are there any members of the public wanting to speak on this that are waiting?
I received no speaker cards.
No speaker cards, okay, so that being said, I'm looking to council for questions on this part, the vacancy ordinance part. I have one if nobody else does.
I do.
Okay.
I'm on the.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the ordinance, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there's a few things, but I could come back home, but one thing that stuck out to me is their contact information. As name and address, it doesn't include, doesn't include their email address, which I think is, is important to have, and in one way, I think it does go pretty far, like, it's kind of, I would be alarmed if, if my information was posted publicly on a building downtown, but I do think that it's important, and not just for the, the stick, right, to hold people accountable and for the public to know, these are the folks that are keeping this building vacant and not, you know, not getting it, not getting it occupied, but at the same time, also, I think Dion pointed, no, Carol pointed it out, right, that it'll help for people who want to occupy that building, a small business or a micro business or somebody, to, to be able to contact them, because it does feel like a mystery, even for myself as a council member to find out who owns a building or what business is there and, and stuff like that, so I think, I think that, that does balance out. So I think, I think that, that does balance out and I, I support that.
No question.
Okay. Except, oh, could we add email? Could we add their email address on there? Yeah.
I, I'd like to ask about the in-use definition, where the part, I don't know what page this is on exactly, but it says where in-use definition would need to be further developed. And it gives an example. And I know this one definitely is gonna have to go through city attorney and stuff. But I would like to make sure that it is the council's intent, because I, I mean, I think it should be, that in-use, where, where it says, or actually occupied by an owner or some other party for, for some substantially similar purpose, that it address, if it's owner occupied, that that owner can't call it just their personal office that they are actually never in, you know, and, and call it occupied. I think we need to make sure that that definition is getting at what it is intending to get at. And that is that there is a bona fide activity going on in there. And not, like if I'm the business owner and it's just convenient for me to, to make my office there, even though I have an, you know, office somewhere else. And I'm, you know, if I'm not there daily with, in my office, with the office open to the public or however it's supposed to be open when it's on the ground floor, I just want to make sure that that gets addressed however we intend for that to be addressed. Because I think some, some of the vacant buildings that have been vacant for years, you know, are being used as a storage by their owners. And they're, they're not open. They're just, the owners are doing, are just keeping those buildings without tenants, without selling the buildings and using it just to store some stuff.
And that's what we're trying to address.
Exactly.
Having it for storage with a desk.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm trying to point out that in this, it would be easy to, if, if you, if you have to be in the microphone, Emily, because the public has to hear you too. Okay.
There's a microphone right there.
Oh, either one, yeah, either microphone.
So we did consider that too. And I wasn't sure, we were looking at this for downtown, so this might be different citywide. But in downtown, and I don't know for sure if it's first through tenth, but I know that ground floor buildings cannot be office. They have to be retail or something like that. And so in our definition, we did include that at least thirty-five percent occupied, but it has to be open for business and open to the public.
Right.
So it cannot, so that's kind of, we had this in-use definition, but we, I was concerned about that too because there are, I mean, I specifically know of three that are basically storage units for different building owners, but you have to have retail or restaurant or something in downtown on ground floor. So that will help that problem. Citywide, don't know, but.
Okay, so the activity has to invite foot traffic.
Yes, and it has to be at least thirty-five percent occupied, so, and, and open to public. So it can't just be like one corner of it, you know, it has to be a substantial amount.
Yeah, and open to the public, yes. Doors can't be locked all day. Yeah, okay. Okay, are there any other comments from council? Then it looks like this moves forward, right? I'm sorry? I asked. He said there was, oh, we have one now.
Yes, I just received one for the vacancy.
Okay, I thought I closed public comment. Okay.
Give me one second so I can get her set up.
Okay, hang on.
Public comment's spoken on the middle.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Dion, you mentioned making this a citywide. Are you trying first, if we get this adoption and then later putting it on a ballot, since it's just a downtown, we're a downtown subcommittee?
Well, yes, we would go ahead and enact it and then go to the ballot to, so that we can.
Try and.
Otherwise, the, the fines would just be, you know, assessed on the property like the city does it, but it doesn't have any teeth.
But right now, it's just the, our focus is downtown and then later, if this gets adopted, to pushing it out for a vote at citywide?
No, the whole, right now, the whole thing would be citywide.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't aware of that on the committee because in a sense it was a downtown subcommittee. I didn't realize we could, it could be branched out. Okay, so that was one question. Secondly, on the annual monitoring fee of fifteen hundred, does that get the business owner any assistance? What, what is the, why the fifteen hundred dollar fee? Is there anything that?
Because the city's gonna have to go out and inspect it from time to time and keep an eye on it. We would envision that our department here at the city would have a list of, of properties and they would actually monitor them, make sure, you know, they're not getting run down.
Okay, that, and. Okay, I just want to make sure, this is three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you have time, but this is unusual. We don't usually do Q and A. It's usually just public. Well, we had it earlier when we were presenting. Okay, sorry. Real quick, and then like Rebecca had shared sometimes, like putting your owner's names out there. I mean, I understand the purpose of that, to have, you know, hey, this building's available and so forth. But, you know, in some cases, like my parents being elderly, I don't want them reached out to or so forth, you know. So if I'm working with a realtor or someone in assistance with that. So I think hopefully that would be flexible as in what you can put up on.
Or agent, you mean?
Yeah, that you're not putting the owner's name. There'd be a name per se and something different and not an address or anything with that. So that, that was just a concern. And then is there any assistance that would be from the City of Gilroy in helping a owner, you know, get their building? Of course we want to rent it, you know, you, you know, not everybody, I know we have the challenges, but there is a lot of business owners that want to get somebody in. So is there, is there any assistance that we might have from one of our offices or the community area within the City of Gilroy?
That would be something totally different.
With that, okay. Didn't know if we had anything that'd be available.
What in regard to side improvement or economic development?
But that's something totally different than this.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So I think that, just really quick to finish. No, I think.
No, no, you're, you're, sorry, time, yeah, thanks, Jeannie.
But just in regard to Jeannie's question at the end is, there are resources available, right? But they would be separate from this ordinance, right? They just already exist.
Nope, we can't, you can't talk from the audience. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor? We still have public comment open, so before discussion, can we close it?
Yes, closing public comment, okay. So it is now closed, so I thought, yeah, I thought I had said that before, so sorry. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, and maybe Dion, you know, looking at the staff report, it mentions a vacancy exception. Could be power restoration delays from PG&E. But the draft vacancy ordinance that's attached does not outline this. Can this be incorporated into the recommendations for the draft ordinance?
Anything can be, but then when we go forward with it.
Then if so, then I would propose that this be added to the recommendations for the vacancy tax ordinance because of the PG&Es.
Okay, does anybody want to comment on that or everybody share that, adding that? Yeah, that's fine, with the same restrictions though. Then you've got to be actively calling, you know, because we've heard that too, right? I'm waiting on PG&E, but nobody's actually contacted PG&E. Yeah, okay, so, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right then, is that sufficient direction? Jimmy? Okay, and again, this is something that you'll come back to us with when it fits or how it fits or what we do. Okay. Okay, thanks, everybody. That takes care of eleven point two.
Good job.
Yeah, very, very good job. Okay, eleven point three. Police Department, is it Axon? Program and Community Survey Update.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Captain Juan Roche will be providing this presentation. And this is an update on the ten-year contract that council approved with Axon back at the beginning of, right before the fiscal year. And so this has aided us tremendously in our goal to increase officer safety and transparency with the community. So Captain Roche is gonna share some of those highlights with you. And also some of the features have been very beneficial.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public, the administrator. So again, my presentation is on the Police Department Axon Program and Community Update. A little bit of background, the department's priority has always been to improve the safety of our personnel and also increase transparency. And as you may remember, on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, you, or the council authorized a ten-year contract with Axon to purchase the Officer Safety Plan Seven and Fleet Three package. The use of body worn cameras or BWCs and in-car cameras is the best policing approach to promote accountability and transparency. The BWCs and connected energy weapons, or more commonly referred to as tasers, and in-car cameras that we were deploying prior to the approval of the new contract had reached the end of their technological lifecycle. In addition, the previous camera systems, they logged video evidence via independent servers that required maintenance by city staff. So after the, the contract was approved, we, we purchased and acquired the equipment from Axon in July of twenty twenty-three. And then we spent August and September training our staff and those authorized to carry a taser and body worn cameras, making sure they were, they were trained and certified to deploy the equipment. On September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, we officially went live with the body worn cameras, tasers. And the Fleet Three is scheduled to be deployed in March of twenty twenty-four. Axon will be here in February to do the installation on our patrol vehicles. And the cost for Fleet Three will be prorated to reflect March first, twenty twenty-four effective date. So this is now our new taser. It's a taser seven. It is activated manually and we will receive new tasers on July thirtieth, twenty thirty, as part of the contract. The yearly certification training material, the training vouchers for our instructors, all that is included in, as part of the contract, as well as the training cartridges and our, our life or on-duty cartridges. The Axon Body Three is our new body cameras that we've deployed. And I have mine here to pass around, so you guys can take a look. Again, it's the Axon Body Three. It is activated manually with the press of the center button or also via the sidearm signal, which is a Bluetooth activation. So if you, if an officer draws his firearm or taser, the camera gets activated automatically. And then it'll activate any cameras that are in the proximate area of whoever's drawing their, their gun or their, their taser.
Of other officers?
Correct.
That's something new, right?
It is new technology, technology for, for us, yes. We will receive new body worn cameras, January first, twenty twenty-six, July first, twenty twenty-eight, January first, twenty thirty-one, and July first, twenty thirty-three. And we'll receive whatever is the most updated technology that Axon has to offer. Evidence.com, as you can tell, it's, it's an evidence management system. It manages all types of physical and digital evidence such as video, photos, documents, private video surveillance. The system allows for seamless sharing of evidence with the district attorney's office. The community can share digital evidence with the department as long as they receive a link from, from a police officer. And it also includes a redaction assistance software to detect and mask everyday objects such as license plate, faces, and screens. It also came with the Axon Virtual Reality or VR system, which enhances an officer's ability to better address community needs with critical thinking and de-escalation skills. Our defensive tactics training staff have already began training with the device and they're gonna implement the, the VR training during the twenty twenty-four training schedule for the department. As part of the contract, we will receive three new VR systems throughout the duration of the contract. And there's other benefits from the Axon technology. One of them is that all the Axon equipment and software they integrate talk to each other as well as with our CAD and RMS system rims that we purchased about two years ago. The entire system is cloud-based and Axon will replace all equipment that malfunction, malfunctions or breaks. They've already replaced a taser that was submerged under water during an incident. And then it has to reduce the workload of our, of our IT staff as there, there's no servers that require maintenance. Axon Respond, that allows for supervisors to view real-time live footage from an officer's body worn camera. And they can determine their location during critical incidents such as active shooters, officer-involved incidents, which again, we've already utilized this technology to look at an officer who was in need of emergency assistance. We were able to figure out where he was. And then the Axon View and Capture. It allows officers to capture photo and video evidence directly from their issued smartphones out in the field and directly upload it to the evidence dot com system without having to drive to the police department. And then as far as the surveys, it's a, a software called My Ninety by Axon. Part of the department's work plan for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five is to increase the department's transparency and community trust building via community surveys. My Ninety Axon was identified as a tool to help accomplish that goal. And then My Ninety offers both external and internal surveys that are a hundred percent anonymous. And actually, the internal surveys were sent out today for the first time. And this will help us get a pulse of the department's training needs, morale, and health. The community survey and post-contact surveys went live on October first, twenty twenty-three. The community survey can be taken by anyone by scanning a QR code that I will share at the end of the presentation. It allows the community to provide input on public safety concerns, their view of the police department, and input on how the department can better serve them. And then individuals can choose to provide their demographic information for both surveys. And then the post-contact survey is sent out daily to community members who receive police services for certain type of incidents such as thefts, missing persons, stolen vehicles, and threats. And those who receive the survey are victims or callers in need of, of police services. The department receives daily results from the surveys and can analyze the data on, on the My Ninety dashboard, which I'll share on the next couple of slides. So this right here is the My Ninety Axon dashboard. This information was pulled last Thursday, January fourth. And we've sent out about twenty-five hundred surveys and we've had about three hundred and ninety-three responses, which is about a fifteen point three response rate. From talking to Axon, this is a slightly higher response rate than other departments, so it's, it's good response rate. And if you look at the chart on the right or the center, out of those responses, two hundred and thirty responses or sixty-three percent view the department in a very positive view. Eighty-eight responses or twenty-four percent have a positive view of the department. Twenty-five responses or seven percent have a neutral view of the department. Thirteen responses or four percent reply that they have a negative view of the department. And seven responses or two percent of the total have a very negative view of the department. As far as community sentiment, out of the surveys that were sent back, eighty-one percent have a positive view of the, of the agency. And if you look to the right, it actually compares from the previous thirty to sixty days. And our score increased by five percent from the previous sixty days. Ninety-two percent of the responses felt they were treated with respect. Eighty-eight percent felt they were treated fairly. Eighty-eight percent felt they were listened to. Ninety percent understood what they were told. And eighty-four percent had their questions answered. Now, the, the chart on the top right, there's a question, a follow-up question that says, did you receive the help that you needed? And it's an optional question. They don't have to, they don't have to answer the question, but we did receive two hundred and eighteen responses. A hundred and ninety or eighty-seven point two percent responded that they did receive the help they needed. And twenty-eight responses or twelve point eight percent responded that they did not receive the help they needed. So out of those twenty-eight individuals that responded, that they did not receive the help they needed, they were asked a follow-up question, which was, what was the reason you did not receive the help that you needed? And there's two options is, one option is I was told that this was not a police matter and then an officer did not respond or follow up with me. If you can tell the, the percentages, they're somewhat misleading in this slide because on the live, on the live dashboard, when you click on the percentages, it's really a reflection of six responses that we got out of the twenty-eight that answered that specific question. And then when you compare the view of the agency versus race in the city, it lists if they provided their, their race. It compares, it compares their race to how they view the department. The darker areas of the, the slide, it just represents a higher response from. from that specific race under that, under that column, so we have a higher response rate under very positively for Hispanic, Latino, and white individuals that took the survey, who chose to provide their, their demographic information. And part of the survey too is what is your, what is your top safety concern in your community? As you can tell, the top two is homelessness and theft, and then on the, on the chart to the right, a comparison month by month, October, if you can tell, October twenty twenty-three, the main concern was homelessness, and then November, it went, the number one priority was theft, and number two was homelessness, so it, it is able to distinguish from month to month what the top concern is for the community based on the responses. The next question that asks is what would you most like your PD do to improve safety in the community, and the number one response is increase patrol car visibility. And here's some more demographic information if they choose to provide, one hundred and seventeen provided their gender, there was the option of male, female, non-binary, and then age group, one hundred and eighteen individuals provided their age group. So next steps for the police department is we'll, we're going to explore best deployment practices as we receive new equipment throughout the lifetime of the contract, you know, with new, new equipment is we'll, we'll receive more contemporary technology, and then we're going to utilize social media platforms and community engagement events to encourage community members to complete the post-contact and the community surveys, and then the dashboard that I showed you, we're going to actually post a link on our website to make it, you know, shared with the public, so they'll be able to go on there daily and, and look at our scores for different, the different areas that we're asking for information on. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments, and this is the QR code for the community survey, if anyone would like to take the survey.
Thank you, Captain, very much for that report, your body cam thingy is right over there for you to, yeah, that thing's heavy.
It is.
That's pretty heavy, boy, of all the things you gotta wear. Okay, any questions, Councilmember Bracco?
So, is this up and running now?
The dashboard?
Yeah.
So we've been collecting data from surveys since October twenty twenty-three, the dashboard will be available to the public beginning this week.
Now, is the police department actively, like daily, monitoring what's going on with that, so if there's a problem, they can call the people?
So it is a hundred percent anonymous, unless someone leaves a name and number, we have no way to track back, track the individual that made whatever comments.
Can, can a citizen go on there and make a complaint?
Technically, yes, if they provide their name and number and a way to contact them, but it's not intended to receive complaints, that's not the main focus of the, of the survey.
So, does it have like a contact us part in there, where if someone wants to talk to, you know, a captain or something, they can go through that program and do that?
There is a box or a question at the end, is would you like to provide any additional information, and then they can type whatever they would like to type, contact me at this number or.
Okay.
I think that's already on the police department website, though, right?
We do have our complaint form and commendation form on our department website.
Their general website.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you, Captain, for the information, I'm wondering, is the survey sent to, the post-survey sent to everyone?
The post-contact survey is sent to everyone that receives services for the call list that we've predetermined, so the type of calls or the type of incidents, if they provide a cell phone when they call in, they will receive a, a survey.
Okay, so just for those, just for folks who call about those particular needs or requests?
Correct, so for example, we left out, for example, you know, we have a type call or type incident for a dead body, where we don't want to send the relatives of, of a deceased, you know, a survey on how we did.
Right. Okay, anyone else?
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to.
Madam Mayor?
Oh.
We do have public comment, yes.
Okay, sorry, public comment, opening public comment.
One speaker, and it's Ron Kirkish.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, as the captain was talking, I got to thinking about the issue of, it's been since, I believe nineteen eighty-six, that we, that Gilroy determined the number of officers never, office, excuse me, officers necessary to protect our city, nineteen eighty-six, and our city has grown substantially to fifty-four thousand, I think that number needs to be readjusted, I don't know how to do that or what that number should be, but it seems to me, you know, I, I do the police blotter every week, and I send it out to the community at the best I can, and we do have a lot of crime going on, so I do believe we need more officers, I'd like to see something updated about what we really need now instead of what we needed back in nineteen eighty-six, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, closing public comment, and thank you, Captain, for the report. Okay, item eleven point four, consent to the appointment of Heath McCann McMahon as Utilities Director, Leanne Phillips.
Yay. Hi, good evening, Council, members of the community, we're happy to bring forward tonight the appointment of our new Utilities Director, our first Utilities Director, we recently completed the recruitment process for this position, this was consistent with the council's approval of the creation of a Utilities Department as part of the fiscal year twenty-four budget. After we've concluded a series of panel interviews comprised of subject matter experts, a community member, department heads, the city administrator, a top finalist was selected, Heath McMahon. He has been identified as a strong fit for this position, he completed a thorough background check, and at this time, our city administrator Jimmy Forbus is recommending that Mr. McMahon be appointed as Gilroy's first Utilities Director. He brings over twenty-five years of related work experience, having worked in both local government and utility districts across California, he previously held positions with Valley Water and Zone Seven Water Agency, and prior to coming to Northern California, he worked for two districts in Southern California as well as the city of San Clemente. He started his career in civil engineering, holds a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Cal State University, Long Beach, he's also a licensed professional civil engineer in the state of California. He's really excited to join the Gilroy team, and consistent with our city charter, the council needs to consent the city administrator's recommendation to appoint a department head, so that's the reason for this coming before you tonight. Upon the consent of the city council, we will issue a final offer letter, and he is scheduled to begin employment later this week, happy to answer any questions.
Yay, thank you, I'd like to, if I don't, if you guys don't mind, first, is there a public comment on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and now to council, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Leanne, for this, knowing the importance of this position, I have a couple of questions for you, will, if this is approved, will Mr. McMahon be working in the office here at City Hall?
Yes, he will.
Okay, does Mr. McMahon live in Gilroy?
No, he does not.
Can you share where he lives?
South San Jose.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do we, what do we do here? A motion, I need a motion to consent to the.
So moved.
Okay. All right, who wants to take it? I heard Councilmember Armendaris making the motion.
I second it.
Okay, it's seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
And this can be a digital vote.
Digital vote, okay. Has everybody voted? There it is, unanimous with the one absent, okay, thank you, all right, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, Bryce is going to bring up a slide to, to show you the final product for the Gilroy Garlic Festival Memorial, this project was approved by council a few months ago with some, some really well-thought-out direction, and our staff handled it very professionally, the work, everything but the monument was done by our Public Works Department, and even the monument installer complimented us on how good a, a job they did, so I'm really proud of them for doing a, a good job with this, this is the, the memorial that council approved, and the total cost of this entire project was about twenty-eight hundred dollars, so it was, it was done very respectfully, and so I wanted to show that to council.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
To finish this project out, and I'm very proud of our community, we've received a lot of good feedback, and I think, I think we got this one right, so thank you for the support from council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jimmy, I feel like we should mention that Hating's Funeral Home did take care of making this at their cost, it wasn't donated, but it was at their cost, so that's how a lot of this came down, so it was very nice to work with them, okay. Yeah, and Councilmember Armendaris, do you like the garlic on the bottom?
I do.
It looks beautiful. Okay, okay, city attorneys' reports?
No report tonight.
All right, then with that, we are adjourned at eight oh one PM. I know.